It's nine o'clock. Let's go ahead and call the meeting. We have opening prayer this morning and Mr. Fulton is going to take care of it for us.
Stand with me for the prayer. Bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for all the blessings that you've given us. Thank you for this Easter weekend and what it meant to us as Christians. And, Lord, we just pray that you be with us here today and help us to liberate things that are in Jackson County's best interest. Pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, whose liberty and justice are all.
That brings us down to a proclamation we have this morning for the National Day of Prayer. If y'all would just listen up while I read this. It is, whereas prayer is a fundamental part of our national heritage, with the first National Day of Prayer proclaimed by the Continental Congress in 1775, an action reaffirmed in 1952 by the United States Congress. And whereas this year marks the 74th annual observance of National Day of Prayer, and this year's theme, Pour Out to God, Pour Out to the God of Hope and Be Filled, was inspired by and further emphasized in Romans, Chapter 15, verse 13. "Now may the God of hope fill you with all joy and peace and believing so that you will abound in hope by the prayer of the Holy Spirit." And whereas every day in Jackson County and across our nation, prayers are made seeking forgiveness and reconciliation or giving thanks for our many blessings. Prayer also continues to offer comfort, direction, and strength to so many as they go through uncertain times. And whereas National Day of Prayer is intended for all those who seek to pray for this nation, its leaders, and its people. This Day of Prayer has become a unifying force for citizens from diverse religious backgrounds and affirmation of our constitutional rights together in worship. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim May 1st, 2025, as a National Day of Prayer in Jackson County, Mississippi. I need a motion?
Send a move.
Have a motion by Mr. Ross?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bossard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. Thank y'all. There's no one here to accept that, I don't believe. Oh, okay. Come on. I'm sorry.
Well, thank y'all so much for honoring the proclamation for Jackson County. I'm the state quarter for the state of Mississippi. My name's Deborah Brown. And I have Ginger McGruder here. She's with Ocean Springs coordinating her event. And she's going to give just a moment about what she's going to be doing. And then Liz Hup is going to be coordinating for Pascagoula. But I just want to say, you know, prayer has been the bedrock of our country from its founding. And our leaders know, many of them know, when they call a day of humiliation and prayer, they understand that, you know, politics is not the strength behind it, but it is God that we depend on, and Him alone. So I just want to encourage you to do that. Go out on National Day of Prayer on Thursday, which is going to be on May 1st. And it's going to be, they're going to be giving their time. If you want to come up, Ginger, talk about yours, just for a moment.
Good morning. Well, frequently, National Day of Prayer is at 12:00 noon, and usually at City Hall. And in Ocean Springs, it's going to be at night at 6:30 PM in the high school football stadium, Greyhound Stadium. So we invite any of you to come who would like to. And if you want to go to both, you can go at noon in Pascagoula, and then you can come to Ocean Springs. So we appreciate the support here. Thank you.
And Liz?
And I'm Liz Hup. And ours will be at noon on the courthouse steps here in Pascagoula. And I invite everyone to come and join us in this time of prayer for our country and our city and our county. Thank you.
Thank y'all so much because, you know, when you think about the National Day of Prayer, it's one day of prayer that the whole nation is actually in a spirit of unity. And that's what we need for our cities, our communities. We need people working together. But the foundation of that is going to our Lord in prayer and believing that He will sustain us. And so we just thank you that you've, as he repeated our theme this year, pour out to the God of hope and be filled with all joy and peace in the Holy Ghost. So y'all be blessed, and we thank you for having us today. Appreciate it so much.
Yes, I have a special presentation from the Minority Caucus, Mississippi Association of Supervisors, Minority Caucus, Community Legend Award of 2025 for a person here in Jackson County, District Two Moss Point School District Superintendent Oswego Harper. Oswego Harper has changed the Moss Point School system to a flex schedule. They graduate rate went up to 92 percent. They have from a D rating school rate to a B, kindergarten curriculum number one in the state. I just want to recognize him from the Mississippi Association of Supervisors, Minority Caucus, Legends Community Award.
Supervisor Morris, just thank you so much for this acknowledgement. Of course, we don't do anything for accolades or recognition, but just do everything in our power as a team to make sure that we're ensuring that quality Tier One instruction touches the desk of every child every day. So a lot of it was done on prayer. James 5:16 said, "The effectual fervent heartfelt continued prayers of righteous men and women can make tremendous power available." That's dynamic and it's working. So we've done a good job in Moss Point, and we believe that the best is yet to come.
That brings us down to amendments to the agenda. I don't have any, Mr. Morris.
I'll have any.
Mr. Taylor?
I have done.
Mr. Ross?
None.
Mr. Bossard?
None.
Mr. Edwards?
None.
Mr. Fulton?
No.
We're doing good. Mr. O'Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Comer?
Just one. Mr. Comas, I want to add, under Board Attorney, regular agenda, a resolution we, this board had voted to enter a contract with PATH for some energy savings. And we have a number of customer participation agreements for incentives with Mississippi Power that need to be approved and executed by Mr. Fulton.
Are there any others? Anybody else has amended? Okay. Could I get a motion to approve the amendments?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Morris? Have a second by Mr. Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right. That brings us down to general public comments. Anyone here for general public comment this morning? Come on up. Give us your name and address.
Good morning. Amon Mahedin, 1219 Monticello Boulevard. I was just asking if we have an update on the, any updates on the Henshaw Bridge project? You know, it's causing, it's causing serious inconvenience to the parents of the middle school. And it's diverting traffic all around. It just makes life very difficult for the people of Ocean Springs and Gulf Park Estates. And do we have any kind of update when even like pedestrian traffic, just like regular cars can go back over the bus?
I was going to ask the road manager during Supervisor Adams to give me an update on the Henshaw progress.
Okay.
Does he want to hang around for that?
Yeah, do we have, do we have like a scope, like a timeframe, like a few months, like if you, like it needs to be better before like the school year starts? You know, now that, now, yeah, yeah, I mean, but it's like, yeah.
We're waiting on the utility authority. So it's out of our hands until they get the sewer line. You don't want to mess out there, do you?
No, no. Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
I'll get June to give us an update.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. All right. Could I get an order approving the consent agenda as amended?
I'll move.
I mean, a motion. Thank you, sir. I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, that brings us down to department heads. Mr. El? Do you have anything?
Yes, we have a resolution approving an MOU between Jackson County Board of Supervisors and Singing River Mental Health for the crisis stabilization services bed expansion. This is some ARCA funds available, but we need a MOU between us and Singing River Services to kind of, to buy some things to help with that expansion.
Okay. I'll move.
I second.
Have a motion by Mr. Taylor and a second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That brings, Mr. Fulton, the Graveline Bay land acquisition. And Ms. Vito, let the record show where I accuse myself of this one.
I'll pull this up on the screen. This is the item that we tabled at the last meeting regarding the acquisition of property in the Grand Bay or the Graveline Bay area. As you recall, last meeting, the Secretary of State's office was here, the DMR was here, and the DEQ. And they described some funds that were available to purchase land in this area for conservation purposes. And after a long discussion, the board decided to table it and wanted to bring it back to your attention today. There were two options that were given at the last meeting. One was a parcel, a partial acquisition that included two, part of one parcel and the complete parcel here on the south. And then the other option was a complete acquisition, which included the purchase of four separate parcels in entirety. And I think, based on the discussion that we had and since then, I think that the board may be in favor of just allowing them to go ahead with this smaller piece. And I kind of think that's where we are. And if that is where we are, I'd like to get a board action on it just to allow them to go ahead and purchase that piece there and move forward with the program.
Okay. Can I get a motion on that?
Yeah. Send a move.
I'll second.
Any more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Mrs. Berry coming finance? Miss Math.
Good morning. The first item I have is the order approving the claim stock it.
So moved.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Okay. And our last item is the resolution authorizing the inter-fund loans for fiscal year September 30th, 2025.
motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Morris and a second by Mr. Bossard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Tracy, come on up.
Good morning. I have a resolution approving the proposal for the auction services submitted by Wolf River Auctions LLC for our firearms auction, which is on May 16th.
So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Bossard?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Okay. Now, the other resolution is declaring the county property as surplus and authorizing the sale at the auction on May 16th.
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Taylor and a second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is Earl here? Oh, okay. Come on up.
It's Ryan.
That's all right. You doing all right today?
Yes, sir. Good morning, y'all. Just a quick update from the OES. This past Thursday, we had our second Shelter Task Force meeting. There was some decent attendance with regarding municipalities. Discussed a few topics from the initial meeting as well as kind of went over where each of the municipalities were in their plan of action. And I'll leave you at, we're making progress. I don't think this is going to be a quick thing, but I think that we'll get there. So, you know, our office remains committed to being a consistent part of this process. So facelift or renovation at Station 2 on Big Ridge Road is nearing completion. Thursday afternoon, I did a walk-through with the contractor, which revealed just a few small things that needed to be touched up on a punch list. So, you know, over the past month or two, that station has received a pretty good bit of TLC, as I'd call it. Full kitchen renovation and along with the rescan and the re-roof, it's coming along nicely. Purchase order has been issued for the driveway, the new driveway at the Old River Road Station, which is Station 10. Waiting a start date from the contractor as far as the driveway goes. And then in terms of progress at the new EOC, I don't know how often y'all get a chance to drive by, but it's right around the corner from my house. So I'm steady driving by looking and admiring it. You know, looking forward to the day we get to move in there. But there's been some, what I would consider preliminary dirt work done, some test pollen driven. So it's very, very exciting to see things come to light out there. So that's all I have in terms of an update from the OES. Any questions for me?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank y'all very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you a lot.
Mr. Comas, can I knock this resolution out?
Sure.
Few months back, the board entered into a contract with PATH for energy savings projects. And I think this past week, PATH sent to Brian a number 20-plus customer participation agreements for incentives with Mississippi Power Company and requesting Mr. Fulton to execute all these where, Brian, if you want to add to that, the county is, by doing certain things, is going to receive incentives and save money as part of this program. So that's what it is. Just, I just need authority to sign, go ahead and sign those.
Okay.
Right. I have a resolution prepared authorizing the county administrator, Mr. Fulton, to execute all of these agreements with Mississippi Power.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion by myself, a second by Mr. Bossard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank y'all. Next up, we have a presentation from Lemon Motor Insurance. Come on up, Charles.
Good morning. Thank y'all so much for this opportunity to be here. I'm Scott Lemon with Lemon Moller Insurance. We've been meeting since first part of January to prepare for this presentation and the insurance program renewal, which is April 30th. So this is the board meeting where we need some action. Certainly want to thank Mr. Comas for joining us along in those meetings to help us as we make decisions. Brian and his team, he had Tracy come in and help do a deep dive on inventories throughout the county, which was very helpful. Matthew came in and helped us with projects so that when we go to the market, they know what projects you have coming up and what kind of maintenance programs you have. Certainly Melissa has been a big part of the process. And we couldn't find all the buildings in the county if it wasn't for Kelly taking us around and helping us find everything. And certainly Josh joining us to help watch out for the checkbook. We continue, and Charles will talk a little bit about this, the market with inflation that we faced over the last couple of years. Randy, the market wants to know what they're insuring and how it's built and how it's maintained. And we spent a lot of time this year going through a very methodical process to work on valuations and constructions. Probably the good news, Ken, is that the market liked very much what we presented on the county's behalf. We beat the market when it comes to pricing. We beat the market when it comes to terms and conditions. And then we, which left us with some great decisions to make. So I'm going to let Charles go through, unless there's any questions, I'm going to let Charles kind of go through more of the information and numbers that helps.
We'll see. All right. Thanks, Scott. I don't know if these pages are numbered. Go to that page right there if you want to. I don't see a number. So this is the premium summary. And so you've got four columns there. So the first column is the, I think I will use this. The first column is the expiring program. So that's what we were in '24 through '25. If you look at it, you've got the total insured value was ended the year at $208,606,799. We actually started the year at about $192 million. But if you go down to those four little blocks at the bottom in the middle of the page, you'll see where we added about $16 million in value. So over the year, so we started at $192, but went at $208. And then as Scott said, we did a really deep dive on the statement values this year. And that resulted in an additional increased values of $27,747,535. So if you skip over one column to where it says renewal of '25, we actually went to the market at $236,356,334. So if you, and if you come down from that, so we're still at $50 million limit, what we call sublimit on the schedule. The deductibles are the same year after year. So '25 for all the perils, so that's like theft, vandalism, lightning, my favorite malicious mischief. All of the wind, so if it's just a straight line wind like today, if a wind just blew up for some reason, it's been blowing lately, you're looking at $25,000 there. And then the program deductible last year was 3%, and we chose to leave it at 3% again this year. Now, again, if you go from $208 to $236 and you apply that 3%, that did increase the exposure to the county by 1.3 million. And then the premium last year ended at 2.582. And if you just took that program and renewed it, you're looking at 2.196,947. So that's a result of, it's about $387,000 savings. If you go over one and you see that's the recommended option, because we're increasing the values from, starting at $192 all the way up to $236, we looked at a lot of different options. We looked at doing deductible structures, deductible buyback structures. But where we really settled on as a team was increasing the limits per the schedule. So we wanted, so the recommendation is to go from 50 to 60 million subliminal coverage. Everything else would remain the same. It still results in a savings of $279,790. So down to about 11% over the year. And then we also have another option there if you wanted to increase it up to 75. But we kind of landed on the option one, which is the 60 million. And really, another bigger thing is not only the premium savings, but the rate. So rate is what I say, the cost per gallon of gas. So we got a lot bigger tank this year, right, in our car. So we went from $192 all the way to $236. So we're a bigger buy. But the rate, the price per gallon of gas, I'll say, went from 1.181 down to 0.856. So we're actually down 27% in rate. And if you took the overall savings from that option one, you'd save about 11%, $279,790. Now that, if you look down there where there's some notes below that, you'll see note flood audit conducted throughout the year. And we were conservative, this number, Joel actually sitting in the back right there actually was in charge of this. He said the number's more around $200,000, but we're going to be conservative, say $150,000. So if you take that savings of the $279 plus the flood audit that was conducted throughout the year, there's an additional savings of $150,000. That's going to bring the total flood and insurance program down to four. You'll save $429,790 year after year. So to summarize, we got lower rate, increased values, increased coverage. And what I didn't mention, we also were able to move it from scheduled buildings to blanket, which is a huge deal. And due to flood audit, the overall resulted in a savings of, like I said, $429,790 overall premium savings year after year, year over year. Questions, comments, concerns?
We do this with our homes.
It's coming, Ken.
Yeah. So, you know, and I think we really got to the market, but the market's turning. You know, we put a lot of work into this to make it right. Like, we did go up in the valuations, but the... Um, like, we did go up in the valuations, but, um, the, uh, the, the valuation push is what the market caused it. That was a very favorably received by the market. Um, I think the homeowners associate, I mean, the homeowners market will follow suit through commercial, where you start to see the swings on our side. And there's more leverage to pull on the commercial side than there are on the personal side. Your house is your house. You can put a new roof on it, you can cut the trees and get the limbs off of it, but, you know, it is what it is.
The, the capital is closer in the commercial market side from the capital markets to the insured versus in the homeowners market. You got regulators in between and so forth that slow that down. But the capital, the price of capital is coming down. I think probably the other interesting thing is we look back and the price per gallon that Charles talked about, you're paying the same rate as you paid in 2014 and in 2022. So you caught it down, caught it up, and it's on its way back down right now.
Well, y'all are doing a great job. We appreciate it.
A lot of work made into it by this, but.
Yeah. Oh, and I meant to, I saw your, uh, Facebook post, 55 years, is that right? Congratulations.
We just thought that the additional 10 million on the top was a good buy at this point. Um, we, we, we saw the rates had, had gone down quite a bit and, uh, we did want to save money in the budget. Uh, this may be, like Josh said, this may be the only thing in the budget that goes down this year. Um, but we did see it as a good option to buy a billion dollars' worth of coverage since our total insured value is, is going up a good bit. And also we brought new buildings and new, uh, properties onto the schedule, so, um, we, that's what we recommend, the option one.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah, that's about 278,000 cheaper this year compared to last year.
We, we needed it.
Had, had we kept everything the same, it was about 385,000, but, you know, with the cost of inflation, we felt like we needed a little, you know, a little more protection on the top end.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good. Could I get a motion?
Mr. Cummins, if you, when the motion's made, if the motion could include allowing you to execute all documents necessary to effectuate that coverage so we don't have to come back and get another, another resolution or another order entered?
Thanks, Jim.
Take that motion. Okay. I would have a motion by Mr. Taylor, a second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, sir. Thank you all a lot. We appreciate it.
Thank you all. I, I think, did Charles kind of talk about the flood insurance, and I said, I know y'all have that on your agenda a little later, but I, the, the work that was done by Brian and Melissa and their team on your flood insurance to reduce your costs by over 150,000 was huge. I mean, and, and they went back to me and said, hey, we've got these projects that, you know, everybody says, think, uh, we have to continue, you had coverage on, and they were able to go through the worksheets and Brian get way in the details there, but for the financial, uh, ability of the county to be able to do that, it, it was well worth the effort. I just wanted to say that. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, guys.
All right. That brings us down to action items. Brian?
Manny McPhillips is here today, and I'm gonna let him cover our state and federal action items.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks for having me down. All right. The legislative session mostly wrapped up a few weeks ago. As you probably heard, they did not finish the budget, so we'll be coming back at some point between now and June 30th. But, uh, I was gonna give you a quick overview of the things that we worked on. The big picture this year, obviously, was elimination of the personal income tax and transportation funding. Um, that income tax will be eliminated, uh, subject to a little bit of growth every year for about the next 15 or 16 years. Um, gas tax will increase, uh, three cents per year over three years and then have an inflationary factor associated with it. Uh, so what that's gonna do is that's gonna put more money into MDOT for, uh, capacity and maintenance projects. It's also gonna double, about double the, what you get for state aid roads. Uh, so that's, that's gonna be good. Um, puts a little bit of diversion into the multimodal program as well. Not enough to really do much, but it's a good start, um, as we try to do, uh, ports, airports, railroads, et cetera. Um, so like I said, they will, the governor will have to call them back sometime between now and June 30th. It could be a matter of weeks. It could also be in the middle of June. Uh, they are currently discussing that between, uh, legislative leadership and the governor. Um, you know, one of the sticking points at the end was whether or not to do these sort of member projects, these local projects, uh, like we had, like everybody else around the state had. Um, at this point, they were not, uh, they were not gonna do any individual projects. We'll see if that changes in the special session, but where we were at the end of the regular session, no GCRF, no tidlens, no GO Mesa projects. Uh, but again, we're, we're still working on that. Um, all right. A couple of the major policy issues outside of funding that we worked on, redistricting. Chairman Bryce Wiggins was the point person on that on the Senate side. Um, as you can see, uh, I'll show you what, uh, will change now between circuit and chancery. Um, it's all on your, on your packet, but, uh, beginning with 2027, Jackson County will be by itself in the circuit court. Um, there will be a fourth judge, uh, one of which will be focused on intervention court drop words. Um, chancery sort of, uh, over a couple of cycles will move to Jackson County being on its own. Um, in the interim, there is some mandatory call sharing between the counties that are participating in 16th Chancery District, um, that based on pro, based on population size. So that, that'll change, um, going forward. And eventually, like I said, in 2031, Jackson County will be by itself, uh, in the Chancery District as well. Um, other issue we worked on, uh, next generation 911. So we're moving away from your typical 911 center to much more of a technological solution. Um, there's a whole new statewide approach to that. Uh, you've got some details in your packet. Bottom line, there's more money that's gonna be coming down to, um, these local emergency communication districts, and we did a lot of changes to the bill that protected y'all's interests, uh, make sure that y'all retain decision-making authority, make sure that money that's generated here in Jackson County comes back here. Uh, and Kenny Johnson was very helpful. Really appreciate him and all your emergency managers for the feedback, because we.
Is there any kind of reimbursement for counties that have already spent the money to, to build a system?
No, and I think this is more going forward. You've got, if, this is more money to migrate to that next gen 911. Uh, but we did, you know, but one of the sticking points, one of the areas we worked on was the investments y'all have made in those land mobile radios. We made very clear that you can continue to service those with these dollars, assuming they're in your plan. So we, we tried to make some situations where you were, you were not, you were able to maintain what you've already done with these dollars. Um, PERS, I know, I'm sure everybody is very interested in PERS. Part of the big tax cut transportation package was some PERS reform, starting in March of 2026. So first of all, nothing changes for anyone that is currently in the system at, at all, full stop. Starting with people who are hired in March of 2026, there will be a new, what's called fifth tier, um, that's gonna have sort of, it's a combination of defined benefit, defined contribution. So you've got portion of the, of the employee's contribution will go into your typical PERS system. A portion of it will go into sort of like a 401K. Uh, they've made some other changes about retirement age and certain years of service that, again, go to those people hired after March 2026. Does not change anything to current beneficiaries. Um, one thing on PERS that we did work on, there was some legislation that said if you left the PERS system, you would have to take your proportionate share of the state's total unfunded liability, which is $26 billion. Um, just in some of the things that we've been working on here, we wanted to make sure we, that bill died, and we needed it to die. It was gonna, um, potentially be a problem for Jackson County down the road, so.
Does the person stay in the same tier that they originally hired in at if they leave and come back at some later date?
I believe that it's on new hires as of March 26.
So someone taught in like 2006 and left.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna say I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that, but I believe it's for new hires after 26. Um, but we can find, I'll find out for you. Um, there's, uh, one thing that we worked on a lot and kind of quick, uh, thing that bubbled up was, uh, property tax assessment caps. Um, this was something where it would, it, any, anytime your assessment rose over 5% in a year, anything over that 5% could not be subject to ad valorem. So it was trying to kind of put a cap on what you could do with property taxes. That bill was killed, but that's gonna come back again. We need to spend some time talking about that in the off season.
I'm assuming that, that comes a problem when there's a lot of inflation, right? Because if you cap the property tax and then you got inflation growing, you're gonna automatically trigger a tax increase.
Yeah. And that, and that was the feedback that we provided. You know, this is a really complicated issue and it kind of came up quickly. Um, so this, and, and Manley being, you know, Manley having sat in y'all's chair before was very helpful in, in talking to folks about that one. But that's one we're gonna have to spend some more time on this summer.
One of the big problems was it was, uh, worded as an exemption.
Right. Right. So forever.
And that's forever. So then when you do get growth. After you've already got an exemption, the growth has to occur on the principal and not on the exemption. So it's a, it's a, uh, something that you'd have to maintain, a complicated system forever. Uh, it's, it's a really a, kind of a bad bill, the way it was written.
Yeah. Um, the last thing on here I wanted to point out, opioid settlement funds. So this is just something as y'all think about, um, some of your public health objectives. Uh, so the state's part of many states, uh, lawsuit against a bunch of the opioid manufacturers. There's about, we have about $80 million now, which will grow to several hundred million over many years. Um, they passed a law about sort of how we're gonna decide on what to spend those dollars on, but just be thinking about that, because that's something that maybe CSU beds or some other public health related, um, uh, programs and facilities y'all might take a look at on that front. Um, then, uh, on the federal side, uh, we've got, we're working on two, uh, federal, uh, sort of congressionally directed spending requests. One, the Tanner Williams Bridge project, uh, and the other, the airport terminal expansion project. Those will be going in to our congressional delegation, um, over the next week or so, and then we'll be going up to DC in May, May 20th and 21st to, uh, make the rounds on that. While we're up there, we'll also be talking about our other policy work, you know, GO Mesa, funding increases that we've been working on for the past couple of years, NFIP, risk rating 2.0, um, and, uh, the Trump administration wants to really look at FEMA reorganization. And so given y'all's, uh, really on-the-ground knowledge of that, I want to make sure that, you know, kind of have some feedback on that front. Happy to ask, answer any questions.
You don't understand where we are on the flood maps too, you know, and trying to get those.
Yeah. Last time I talked, yeah, I think they're, they're, they're coming close to the end of that whole process, but, um, we'll have to get, we can get an answer from SNPDD on that.
That's really important to, especially this side of, of county.
Okay. Very good. On good report, Manny.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How do you see the House and Senate reconciling themselves? Obviously, it's gonna happen. Any, any comments on that?
Yeah. I think, like I said, they are currently kind of discussing those things with the governor right now. Um, I mean, the governor has the authority to sort of set the, the agenda for the special session and, you know, he's gonna use that authority. Um, so I think it's gonna be a matter of what, what the, those three parties can come, come together on. They're not real far apart in terms of the whole budget. I mean, there's some, there's some disagreement between, you know, between them on several of the agencies. They're not real far apart. Um, it's just a matter of them getting to an agreement. But I don't, the governor's gonna wait until they are in agreement to call it back. He's not gonna have them just come up there for two weeks and work it out then.
Real quick summary on state income tax. Uh, so the state income tax is gonna be reduced, you know, over the next several, many years.
15 or 16 years, yeah.
15, 16 years. Gasoline tax, grocery tax. Just a quick summary of how that ended up.
Sure. Yeah. The, the income tax right now will continue, you know, it's currently going down from four to three between now and 2030. That's gonna continue on the same trajectory. After that, it's gonna reduce by point two or point three, depending on what type of growth there is in the general, or in the collection, revenue collections. So that'll continue down until it gets to zero. Grocery tax goes from 7% to 5% July 1st. Um, now that's supposed to come out of the state's portion. That's not supposed to impact any of the, the diversion that goes to cities. Okay? So it's sort of comes out of the state portion. Um, gas tax goes up three cents per year, um, until 20, uh, until it reaches 27 cents. Uh, that's still less than all of our surrounding states. Um, that generates about $170 million for MDOT, doubles the state aid road fund, which you're gonna get. Um, and then there's also an inflationary factor, um, that can raise it one cent per year in the future, um, but every other year. And it can't be more than a cent.
Wasn't there one time something that the county had to take action on in order to get this, did that part?
Yeah. That part's not in there anymore.
They didn't, they didn't pass that part.
Yeah. No, nothing related to sales tax. And all those, all those proposals.
Local option tax.
Yeah. All those proposals.
That would've eliminated the local sales tax and created one where we had to create a whole nother option for it.
That's right. That's all gone.
So on the grocery tax, I think there's a, a new formula for calc, calculating the diversion, so that the diversion winds up being the same. It's not 18% anymore. It's some other, uh, based on the formula, so that the cities are still made whole for all of the sales tax that they would normally receive had, had there not been a, a reduction in the grocery tax.
That's right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Manny. All right. That brings us down to supervisor items. I didn't have anything. Mr. Morris?
I didn't have anything.
Mr. Taylor? I would like to ask Joe, I know he's gonna speak with Randy, but when you do that, if, if you have it on the top of your head, can you give us, give me, uh, update on graveling road, uh, completion? What I've heard is late October, early November. If you can update that, please do. Mr. Ross, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Bo Sauer, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna get an update from Joe for the Hanshaw Bridge, uh, repairs. And go ahead and take care of Ken first.
On the graveling, probably gonna be late August 1st to September is my best guess right now.
Okay.
The graveling be completed. We did give them an extension, and that'd be when they're extension's up. They're moving along pretty good. Bridge looks good. So I don't see any, any major issues thus far.
And that's an improvement over October, November. Thank you. Thank you.
On Hanshaw Bridge, I received an email from the city of, uh, Ocean Springs last week, that, uh, that what we thought was a gas line turns out it's an abandoned communications line, so that, that's issues off the table. And, uh, regional wastewater authority said they needed two to three weeks to get all their valves and everything in order, in order to take the sewer off the east side of the bridge and divert it. And they're gonna put it back, my understanding is, once we're completed with repairs to the bridge. As soon as they tell me they're done, we're moving in to start our, start our work. And I still think.
Are you gonna have to drive, are you gonna have to drive them some pylons to relocate it to?
No.
No.
No. They're gonna hook it into the force main.
Okay.
Uh, that's there, the one that board. And hopefully, and I'd say as soon as they tell me they're done, we're gonna move in in six weeks. I hope I'm in and out.
Are you gonna talk to them this week, you think, to get an update from them?
They, well, the city's, the city's been the lead on handling the utility locations, and Sarah's been keeping us in the loop with her communications with all, everybody.
Okay.
So we're good. And power.
But you're ready to mobilize as soon as you get the word.
I've got everything sitting on the ground, ready to go.
Okay.
Anybody? Anything else?
So was it May? June and July, that's 12, 15 weeks, somewhere in there. It should be ready before the school.
I would hope it'd be ready before school starts back. Yeah.
We're gonna try our best. And that's giving a pretty good buffer in that time for the, what you said.
Yeah. Our crews work pretty good, so.
Yeah. We'll, we'll be pushing in whatever way you need, till you have.
Kim said they're giving an update, how's Bay Avenue Bridge a project coming along?
Uh, they.
The Bay Avenue Bridge.
We, we acquired the last part of the right of way. We're gonna, we had lunch with engineers Thursday. We're going to, we had lunch with engineers Thursday. We got to move two utilities, a power line and I think a gas line. Once they're done, then we'll be ready to bid.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Appreciate it. All right, that brings us down to closed session. Got to get a motion, see if we enter in the closed session.
So move.
Have the motion, and a, by Mr. Morris, a second, by Mr. Ross. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right.